Good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting, or April 7th, 2015. We'll begin our meeting with the salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. This is Pollan.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dent?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
Here.
Okay. Board did have an executive session before the meeting started. Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Board met in executive session with Chief Wilcox to discuss a matter involving police operations.
Okay, thank you. We're honored to have a lot of great people here this evening, starting with our District Justice and our Chief of Police, and a lot of members of our Police Department, current and future. For talking to Chief Wilcox before we started here, for the first time in 64 years, this meeting, we're going to have swearing-in of our newest officer and also an introduction to our two just recently hired officers. This is something the Board felt was important, and Chief Wilcox agreed with us, that, you know, ever since he's come on in 2007, just through retirements, really, we've had a very big changeover in the Police Department. A lot of older officers that definitely served the community for decades and retired, and now a whole new crop of young officers have come in. And a lot of new faces even for us, and a lot of new faces for the community. People used to seeing the same faces in their police cars as they went by their neighborhoods or through the stores, et cetera. And now, we're getting a lot of newer people coming into our department, and we're proud to have them. We have a very strenuous process for interviewing, and that's put together by our Police Department. We're proud to be very, very diligent in making sure we only hire the best. And ever since Chief Wilcox has come in, that's been proven true. And we have a lot of officers who were hired before he took over, who also hold up that high mantle, sitting behind our newer officers coming in. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Wilcox, and he's gonna make some introductions, and we're also gonna be swearing in our newest officer. Chief?
Mr. Harvey, thank you. Members of the Board, thank you. This evening, we're here on a very auspicious occasion here to swearing our newest officer in, but I would like to introduce two of our newest officers. Officer Ron McPherson, a recent graduate of the Montgomery County Police Academy. Officer Nicole Deviney, she's presently in the Philadelphia Police Academy. They were both sworn in prior to this because of reasons of time restrictions. Tonight, we're gonna welcome aboard Francisco Almeida. Francisco is from a Police Department in Virginia, Prince County, Prince County, Virginia. He's come up here, he worked with the President of the United States. He has a very, very good past, which he'll be happy to share with you after the meeting. We're very lucky to have him tonight. I also want to thank Judge Wyslowski for coming here tonight, for her time. And at the conclusion of the swearing-in tonight, we have drinks and food. Mr. Gray, we have food.
Salt drinks.
So without wasting anybody else's time here, thank you. Judge? Francisco? Mrs. Almeida, would you like to step up here, please?
I think you're probably... You can place your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand for me.
Aye, Francisco Almeida III.
Of Langhorne, Pennsylvania.
Being duly appointed. Being duly appointed.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Of Falls Township.
Falls Township.
In Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
In Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge...
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
Of Falls Township.
Of Falls Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
That I have not paid...
That I have not paid...
Or contributed.
Or contributed.
Or promised to pay.
Or promised to pay.
Or contribute.
Or contribute.
Either directly...
Either directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
To procure my...
To procure my appointment.
I have not knowingly...
I have not knowingly...
Violated any law.
Violated any law.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
Or procured it.
Or procured it.
To be done by others.
To be done by others.
In my behalf.
In my behalf.
That I will not knowingly...
That I will not knowingly...
Receive.
Receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
For the performance.
For the performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Of any act.
Of any act.
Or duty.
Or duty.
Prettaining to my appointment.
Prettaining to my appointment.
Other than...
Other than...
The compensation.
The compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
Aye.
Aye.
Francisco.
Francisco Almeida III.
Affirm.
Affirm.
That I will uphold...
That I will uphold...
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Members of the Board, if you'd like to come down and meet with the officers. Also, Francisco is badge 117. That badge will be significant to him. It will never be passed on to anybody else. That will be his badge number in perpetuity. We don't recycle badges here.
Picture.
Good, good.
I think they want a picture with you and the officers, and the chief.
Hey, Bill. It's all right. It's okay.
Is Francisco from Prince William?
No.
Prince George's, Prince William?
Yes. There's a million people.
Yeah, it's a big... Yeah. Okay, we're gonna, before we do public comment, we're gonna move ahead with two resolutions, officially hiring Nicole Lynn Deviney and Francisco Almeida III as officers for the Falls Township Police Department. I know Officer Deviney will be Resolution 15-7, and for Officer Almeida, it'll be 15-8. Okay. We'll do these separately. So we have Resolution 2015-7, officially hiring Nicole Lynn Deviney as an officer in the Falls Township Police Department. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Officer 15, excuse me. Resolution 15-8 is to officially hire Francisco Almeida III as an officer in the Falls Township Police Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Wilcox, and Judge Wyslowski as well, thank you very much for your time, and, you know, this, I think, was a great idea, and make it a tradition now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Public comment is our next agenda item. We have one name on the list, Bob Borden.
Good evening.
Appears as though I have the room tonight, but, um, thanks for your time tonight. I'm here tonight to just talk about a situation on my street. I'm a resident of 116 Windy Way, and we have, and have had for a few years, and I think I maybe even mentioned this to Jeff at some point in the past, we have an issue with vacant houses on my street. Now, I don't know exactly what kind of leverage you have to do something, because obviously they're different situations. They're bank-owned, or they're being held up with the family. In a couple of cases, in fact, my neighbors John and Margaret Estock are here, they may know better than me, but I know that there's situations where the owners had died, and the family, you know, left with the family, and then they owed too much on it, and now it's in the bank's hands. So we have been in touch in the past with Ed Newbauer, one of the code enforcers, and he's made a few visits to the neighborhood, and, you know, I think he's done his best to kind of do what he could do to, you know, within the confines of his enforcement, to do what he can do. However, obviously, you know, being, having been vacant for a few years, they're definitely an eyesore to my neighborhood. And all I've seen in terms of when things get out of hand, all I really see is people cutting the grass, and that's basically the limit of what is done. A lot of the properties have dying trees that could, you know, fall on someone's roof at any moment, you know, especially with the storms we have. The houses themselves are, some of them are in disrepair, you know, some of the gutters are hanging down, there may even be, you know, some of the windows are boarded up. Obviously, this encourages, you know, it's, you know, it can attract animals and vermin in addition to making, just for an overall unpleasant sight. It brings, you know, potentially brings down property values. And as I said, some of the homes have been vacant, you know, for at least three, four years, maybe even five, in the case of one of the homes. So I'm really here tonight just to see what more can be done that already hasn't been done with, you know, with these homes, and what kind of leverage you might have, what would you suggest to get some, you know, some action, you know, some of these houses moving, and so we can get somebody in there to, you know, to get them occupied once more.
Okay.
And I do have the addresses, so the vacant homes are in 120, 122, and 128.
Okay. All right. First off, obviously, you know, it's unfortunate that you and your neighbors have to deal with the issue, and after the recession hit, you know, we did see in a lot of neighborhoods, and I think a lot of them have sort of bounced back. So we've dealt with this in varying areas. I know one of the problems, and not knowing specifically, you know, I know that you've talked to Ed Newbauer, and I'm, you know, we'll definitely communicate it to Tom Bennett, who's his boss, code enforcement officer, zoning officer. One of the problems I know we face in other situations is trying sometimes to track down who actually owns it, because banks handle it to this bank, to this bank, to this bank, to this bank, and the mortgage gets sold back and forth, and the property gets sold, and before, and we don't have a record of who actually owns it. We have, at times, gone out and maintained property in terms of cutting grass and things like that, and then we've just leaned the property to get paid for the amount of time our workers are out there. In terms of actual legal power that we have, I don't know, Mr. Clark, what kind of pressure who we'd apply to, what we could do.
The properties need to be maintained consistent with our codes, as long as, as the Speaker indicated, the grass is being cut and garbage is being collected, and there are not any code violations. If the properties are vacant, but they're an otherwise code compliant, there's very little that we can do. As you've indicated, when banks take control of property, sometimes they languish for an extended period of time while they attempt to clean up all of the issues before the property will be sold, but as long as they are in compliance with our property maintenance code, that we can't force anybody to have someone occupy the house.
What we can definitely do is make sure that Mr. Bennett sends somebody out there. We'll send out, you know, I know Ed Newbauer's gone out, we'll, you know, Mike Kirk, I know is, has an eye for these things as well, and we'll make sure that he knows to enforce it to the strictest letter of the law. If there's anything, you know, that's, you know, I mean, because you always kind of, you can play a little bit with things, well, this could be better, if, we'll try and crack down as much as we can.
Can we just try to, Mr. Clark's office possibly, once we find out who does own these properties, because Mr. Borden has contacted me at least once a year for as long as I've been here. We have the same conversation about the same addresses. We talk to Tom Bennett, somebody goes out there, they might cut the grass, and that's the last you hear of it, and they still are in disarray, and I know the one, what is it, 120 or 122 has been empty for at least close to 10 years, right?
Mm-hmm, 122.
Yeah, and maybe we can find out who does own it and get in touch with them, and rather than just Tom make a phone call, we can actually do something legally.
No, we certainly can. We can check the Recorder of Deeds website in Doylestown. We can find out who owns it. What often happens is sometimes a bank will have a management company take care of these properties, and the management companies are doing the bare minimum. And sometimes when we bring to their attention, the bank themselves, some problems that are occurring at the property, you sometimes get a little bit of better response as far as keeping the property in good order. So, yeah, we can definitely check to see who owns it and to figure out what else, what further can be done.
Bank-owned properties, properties are probably easier to get stuff done than ones that aren't, because we have properties that are occupied in the township that don't cut their grass, don't do this, and there's nothing you can do. You know, we try and get them to cut their grass, and you go to court, and they get one more chance, one more chance, one more chance, and they still sit and...
Yeah, that's a good point, because you have occupied properties that are saying worse.
Yeah, that are, you know, so it's really, really hard. Even if you drag them into court, they're gonna get one more chance and one more chance. But if they're occupied by the bank and the township actually reaches out to them, besides, I'm not talking about Mr. Bennett making a phone call.
No, no, we can, we can do something a little bit more formal.
We can get them to do something. It's very, very hard, even if they're occupied.
And I heard your neighbor mention 114 as well, Windy Way?
Yes, Margaret Estock.
Okay.
Now, they have dead branches that are broke and hanging down in the trees.
Right, that's more...
The other day, he puts his recycle out on Wednesday, which we have on Mondays. Beer cans and everything rolling down our streets. We don't need that.
So is this, that house isn't vacant?
These are renters.
That's tenant occupied.
That's tenant occupied.
Yes, yes.
All right, well, that's a different situation.
And the owner lives, the owner lives down the street from us, and I think she should be made to make them clean this property up.
She should. We have an ordinance that would require her to do that.
Yeah, and putting out, and putting out cans more than, you know, 24 hours ahead of trash.
He's had a television setting out there for how long now?
Yeah.
You know, the garbage man doesn't pick that stuff up.
Right, they don't take, yeah. All right, so that's obviously, that's a different matter.
I mean, it's a shame, because I've lived there for 59 years. I paid $9,250 for our house, and we have, I live at 118. And it's a shame that we have to look. Now, I've got one question. Next door to me, he was 100% disabled veteran.
Okay.
Now, the county, as I understand, if you make $75,000 or less as a disabled veteran...
Okay.
The county pays your taxes. Are there, is the county still paying the taxes on that property?
For 120.
That's for 120.
I'm not sure. I don't know. I have, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the, of the, what you just talked about, the $75,000 or less paying taxes, I'm not sure of that to begin with. So we can definitely check it.
My husband and I were at a meeting at the Bucks County Community College.
Okay, okay.
And that's what they said, $75,000 or less, if you're 100%.
Somebody live there now at 120?
No, he died a year and a half ago.
That's one of the vacancies.
And they cleaned the house out, they even took the air conditioner out of the wall and boarded it up. Now, we have to look at that.
Yeah.
During Hurricane Sandy, a branch broke and hit our nice vinyl fence. Did he offer to pay? No, because he didn't have the money.
Well, yeah, we, the issue with the branches and tree obviously is more immediate, because that's a safety hazard, and if that's something, and talking about with, especially with Mr. Dent's talking about with banks, too, if it's a matter of money, you know, if we have to go out and fix it and we pay for it, we're gonna lean their property, and banks...
It's a lot easier with a bank than it is a resident.
Correct, but even, but...
Here at 120, there is a tree that is actually leaning, is it not? And it's pulling up the shed next door.
Okay.
Now, if it goes, it takes our power lines down.
Okay. All right, so we definitely, we need to get somebody out there to take a look and make sure.
I would appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for listening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You gotta use the mic.
So you have to use my...
Oh, good, I'm big now.
Yeah, but we have, yeah, the audio has to get, sorry.
59 years, and not long ago before, when John Trindle was here, these outfits, they called, but all, by the way, Wells Fargo owns all three of them, guys. I called up, and I spoke to a party down there. Excuse me, the guy's dead, the 128. The guy's been dead for years, like four, maybe five, okay?
Okay.
Some guy comes up there one day, and he pulls up, I'm just over there checking the property. He always gotta see what's going on, and I like to make sure. He pulls up, he says, "I'm Dennis, I'm selling, so I'm Steve's power attorney." Who the heck cares? You don't need that. So he had three daughters, looked like Seminarian wrestlers, moved them in the house. We got action going every night, every night, okay? I go down one day, this is the best part, they're all in their little power, like this. You know what they're doing, don't you?
No.
They're cutting the rug, looking for Steve's money.
Ha.
What the hell are you doing? You ain't gonna find the money. I got the money.
Let's go.
I know where money's going. Finally, the house go the auction low. Now, when you talk about these maintenance outfits that come in...
Sorry.
Maintenance outfits come in, I'm outside cutting the grass, I hear bang-banging with a hammer in the house. I call 911, they send John Trindle down. John gets, don't even gets out of his van. "What are you guys doing?" "Oh, we're just putting locks on the door." "John, can I go look at it?" He says, "Johnny, you need another job." "No." "Yeah, I got a cop, you know, I'm glad he ain't for Falls Township no more, he retired."
Right, under John, yeah.
I walk into the house, and we got our, our pipes are in concrete. They're breaking right down to the concrete.
Getting a cop.
And that's the guys that come in there like that. Crazy.
What did John say?
"Yeah, that's okay." "But we're, we're having a problem." "But it's all like Wells Fargo, so you have to call them."
Okay.
The guy next door with the 18 at 120, $240,000 mortgage. Yes, you're right. Mrs. Brown, over $200,000.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. And Steve, now Steve, I know where Steve's put his money, but I know still where it's at. But it's with a bank. "I ain't about to take it, I have no power of attorney." "Let the state take it."
Right.
But when you see them crazy people, now 114, the plumbing breaks. The guys outside, they don't tell you. I tell, I, man, I'm from, I'm from Trenton. I come from the old school. I tell you just like it is. The guy's outside, and I hope he's watching. The guy's outside with his wife, and she won't take a potty, and he holds a towel around her.
Because he has no plumbing.
Because he has no plumbing, because the pipes burst.
You know what I wanted to know?
Yeah, I can imagine.
15 years, that's quick, the town used to be a baseball coach. That's his wife's. Can you go up?
We're gonna do the best we can. I appreciate you letting us know, you know, about it, and I know you've, you've been fighting eight...
I know it's been at least six years. I mean, Bob and I have at least, right, Bob? At least for the past six years have had a conversation, at least if not more, once a year, about the same addresses.
Six years because of...
Well, it's since years, I've been here for six years.
Right.
I'm not saying it hasn't been going on longer than that.
You should know it's going on.
Yeah, yeah, the, I mean, the most, and the thing that hamstrings us, we can cite and we can, we can document, and just like you've given us all the, you know, we can do all that, and we can take it to the courts and say, "Here's the problem." But then it's the courts that have to be the ones that actually force them to do anything.
Like I said, there's actual properties where...
That's the problem for us, is we can only go so far. We'll do everything we can, absolutely.
120, nobody's even been there, they shut the water off, they're doing nothing. And would you believe, electric's still on, and I called five times?
We'll do the best we can. That's, I mean, we, you know, we have the addresses, we'll do, yep, we can do the best we can, especially if it's a safety issue, like the one with the trees and branches hanging, that's definitely something that needs to be taken care of.
Sorry to hold up your five minutes, but...
No, no, that's fine, that's okay.
At least you know what's going on, but Wells Fargo owns all three of them.
Okay.
They're the only ones with any money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So we have plenty to give Mr. Bennett tomorrow, he'll be a busy guy, him and his inspectors. So thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. All right, we're gonna move...
Thanks again.
Thank you. We're gonna move to the next agenda item, number two, consider landscaping bids for Falls Township facilities for 2015. Mr. Gray?
On Friday, March 27th, Township representatives opened sealed bids for landscaping services for Township properties for the year 2015. They were as follows: WDB Lawn and Garden, $20,925; Rushton Concepts LLC, $47,550; Greenscape Landscape Contractor, $23,330; and Penn Valley Concrete and Landscaping, $23,460. Based on the bid results, WDB Lawn and Garden is the lowest responsible bidder. It's recommended that the Board of Supervisors award the contract to WDB for the landscaping services for Falls Township properties for 2015 in the amount of $20,925, contingent on securing a Falls Township business license and workers' compensation insurance.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Gray? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Dent?
None.
Mr. Rocco?
I have none.
Okay. Is there a motion then to accept the bid from WDB Lawn and Garden, $20,925, for landscaping at Township properties?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
We're gonna do the best we can. I appreciate you letting us know, um, you know, about it, and I know you've, you've been fighting eight.
I know it's been at least six years. I mean, Bob and I have at least, right, Bob? At least for the past six years have had a conversation, at least if not more, once a year about the same addresses. Well, since years, I've been here for six years.
Right.
I'm not saying it hasn't been going on longer than that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, the, I mean, the most, and the thing that, that hamstrings us. We can cite and we can, we can document, and just like you've given us all those, you know, we can do all that, and we can take it to the courts. And say, here's the problem. But then it's the courts that have to be the ones that actually force them to do anything.
Like I said, there's actual properties where.
That's the problem for us, is we, we can only go so far. We'll, we'll do everything we can, absolutely.
120, nobody's even been there. They shut the water off, they're doing nothing. And would you believe, electric's still on, and I called five times?
We'll do the best we can. That's, I mean, we, you know, we have the addresses, we'll do, yep, we, we can do the best we can, especially if it's a safety issue, like the one with the trees and the branches hanging, that's definitely something that needs to be taken care of.
Sorry to hold up your five minutes.
No, no, that's fine, that's okay.
At least you know what's going on, but Wells Fargo owns all three of them.
Okay.
They're the only ones with any money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So we have plenty to give Mr. Uh, Mr. Bennett tomorrow, he'll be a busy guy, him and his inspectors. So thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. All right, we're gonna move. Thank you. We're gonna move to the next agenda item, number two, consider landscaping bids for Falls Township facilities for 2015. Mr. Gray?
On Friday, March 27th, Township representatives opened sealed bids for landscaping services for Township properties for the year 2015. They were as follows, WDB Lawn and Garden, $20,925. Rushton Concepts LLC, $47,550. Greenscape Landscape Contractor, $23,330. And Penn Valley Concrete and Landscaping, $23,460. Based on the bid results, WDB Lawn and Garden is the lowest responsible bidder. It's recommended that the Board of Supervisors award the contract to WDB for the landscaping services for Falls Township properties for 2015 in the amount of $20,925. Contingent on a, securing a Falls Township business license and workers' compensation insurance.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Gray? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Dent?
None.
Mr. Rocco?
None.
Okay. Um, is there a motion then to, um, accept the bid from WDB Lawn and Garden, uh, $20,925 for landscaping at Township properties?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, item three, consider the 2015-16 stone and asphalt bids for Falls Township. Mr. Gray?
Joe Arneho from the Public Works Department has secured bids through the Bucks County Consortium for the purchase of asphalt and stone. The purchase of asphalt is from Marsville LLC, located also in Marsville. They are the lowest responsible, responsible bidder when considering delivery costs by Marsville or Township employees, time and salary for pickup from their site. Uh, the purchase of stone is from Hanson Aggregates. Hanson is the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, delivery of the stone, the stone will be picked up by Public Works. Uh, per the specifications of the advertisement for the bid, Consortium members, including Falls, had until March 31st, 2015, to take action on the bid and contract. Uh, the board was in favor of this and is now asked to ratify these two bids.
Okay. And the stone bids came in, different types of stone, 1130 per ton, uh, and 850 per ton, uh, $8.50 per ton. And in terms of the asphalt, uh, wear and course, $55 a ton, and for the binder, $51 a ton. And there was a delivery charge, but as Mr. Gray said, one of the things that makes it a little bit better is that our guys, our staff will just go pick this up, so we won't be paying delivery. Comments or questions for Mr. Gray? Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Callaway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
No.
Mr. Dent?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
None.
Okay, uh, is there a motion then to accept the bids, uh, as presented in the April 1st, 2015, but, uh, memo?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Brask, I'm sorry, Mr. Hart, Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, it was my fault, Mrs. Pollan, I think I screwed you up. Sorry about that. All right, and item number four, consider the 2015-16 signed materials and post bids for Falls Township. Mr. Gray?
Uh, also, Joe Arneho from Public Works cured bids from the Consortium for the purchase of signed materials and posts. Uh, the purchase of signed material and posts would be from Garden State Highway Products. Garden State is the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, the board is asked to consider Garden State Highway Products for signed materials and posts contingent on providing the township with a performance bond and entering into a separate contract with the township.
Okay, comments or questions? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
No.
Mr. Dent?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
How many bids did we receive?
Yes.
We did receive a few, I'm not sure offhand, I could find out and let you know, um, later.
Garden States, who we use now?
We have used them the last few years, yes, we have.
Yeah, it's usually itemized, it's not itemized, that's why I asked.
Right.
Thank you.
And was this on, um, um, I was trying to think, uh, this is for basically for road signs, for street signs, things of that nature?
Stop signs.
Stop signs, okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, it wasn't itemized, but I guess because it's such a variety of things we could be getting, it was, was the assumption I made, but, um, all right, any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, all right, is there a motion then to, um, accept the bid for signed materials and signed posts from, uh, Garden State Highway Products?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is bus quotes for the 2015 summer township, um, Falls Township Summer Camp Program. As people who have their children in the camp know, uh, or if you have people that work for the camp. There are bus trips throughout the course of the program, the six-week program. Starting, I guess, in late June this year and going through July. Uh, trips anywhere from Dorney Park, uh, to, um, um, very special, kids care thing we have listed here, movie theaters, mini golf, all kinds of little trips they take with the different groups of kids. Um, Mr. Gray, wanna give a summary of the five quotes we received?
Yes, the Parking Rec Department received five quotes for the summer camp bus trip transportation. Uh, the five are STA, which is Student Transportation of America, $3,158.75. First Student, $4,787.50. Wertz Motor Coaches, $8,055. US Coachways, $10,815. And the Bus Bank, $12,345.25. And that includes a gratuity, 15%. First Student has provided bus services for the camp the past several years. Uh, the lowest bid this year is STA. This would be the first year we secured a quote from them. Uh, they appear to be reputable, and the quote provided is significantly lower than the other four companies. Uh, the board is asked to consider STA for the summer camp bus trip program.
And the cost we mentioned, should have, I neglected to mention this, make it clear. The cost we mentioned, for example, STA, low, low, quote, $3,158.75, that's for the entire summer camp, that's not, you know, obviously per trip or anything like that. How does that compare to years past?
Uh, when comparing to years past, we, uh, this is about $5,000 than what we paid in 2014.
Less.
Last year, less. Last year, we paid $8,933. Uh, the prior year, 2013, was $10,895. So this is significantly lower when comparing.
Scary though.
Yes.
And it's the same, like, yellow school bus, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, and they, and it does state here too, in the, the memo we have from Mr., um, or actually, it's from Jessica Fox, Assistant Director of Parking and Rec. Uh, that STA does meet all the state backgrounds, FBI, state police, um, you know, child abuse clearances, all the things that anyone working around children has to have. STA meets all of those, uh, and has all of those, so that's obviously something we want to make sure of as well.
Where are they located, AP?
STA is... They are.
It's 945.
Yeah, they're, they're like they're local.
It's a 945 phone number.
Bristol Terminal.
It's like they're a national company though.
Bristol, Green Lane, Levittown. Oh, excuse me, no, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, Green Lane, Levittown. So Bristol Township. Okay?
Okay, I'm good.
Other questions for Mr. Gray? Going in the school buses?
No.
No? Okay, is there a motion then to accept the quote from STA, uh, for the summer camp program, $3,158.75?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, items, uh, six and seven, uh, we were gonna do separately, although they kind of apply to the same type of thing here. Consider stipulations to settle in Spirit Master Funding, um, Third LLC versus Bucks County Board of Assessments, um, appeals at our tax parcel. 13 dash 047 dash 166 dash 008. Uh, and then item seven is the same, but with a different tax parcel. This is essentially a company that has filed, uh, for a reassessment of their property taxes. Um, the, my understanding is the county board of assessments has granted that. Uh, the school district, which of course would, um, um, take the biggest loss on this, I don't know how, I don't necessarily know how much it is, uh, that they're going down by. But, um, you know, they have already approved of this, and, uh, we're being asked to approve as well, and the county will have to approve. So I know this has to be done separately, uh, Mr. Clark, what's the proper, Ms. Gallagher, what's the proper format here for?
It would just may, need a motion, uh, on item number six, to authorize the stipulation to settle, um, the matter of Spirit Master Funding Three versus the Bucks County Board of Assessment.
Okay. Any comments or questions for, uh, legal staff?
Yeah, so did they not pay their taxes?
No, they did.
Grab a refund?
They've always paid their taxes, they're current, um, they just have, um, uh, filed for an assessment because they have claimed that the assessment on the property was too high. Um, the school district, uh, looked at this and decided to agree to the reduction in the assessment. A progressive scale over about four or five years, which will bring it down to where it will be set, uh, moving forward. Um, so the school district thought, uh, based on their appraisal of the property, that it was a reasonable number, and entered into the stipulation to settle.
Okay. Thank you. Now, this being lowered from 400, this is, this isn't the taxes they pay, this is the assessment on the property.
Right.
$469,400 down to $391,500.
Correct, and the other?
So $78,000 decrease roughly. Okay, um, right, so any other comments or questions?
No. No.
No? All right, is there a motion then to approve the stipulation, uh, to settle Spirit Masters Funding, the Third LLC versus Bucks County Board of Assessment, 13 dash 47, 047 dash 166 dash 008?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, um, I guess it's the same company, but they have two different parcels, I guess they have a property that's on two different parcels. Uh, and this is, I should have mentioned this, sorry, this is the, it's the Mealy's Warehouse on, um, uh, New Ford Mill Road, right? Am I getting, um, yeah. Okay. And the next one would be same thing, uh, is there a motion to approve the stipulation to settle Spirit Masters Funding, the Third LLC, or Three LLC, versus Bucks County Board of Assessment? This is for tax parcel 13 dash 003 dash 021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, item number eight is consider adopting ordinance repealing Chapter 209, Section 33 flood hazard areas. Uh, at a previous meeting, the board approved a new ordinance, um, that dealt more, uh, completely with, um, flood areas and flood zones, and how buildings would have to be, and homes would have to be, um, uh, built and improved, and other kind of stipulations. That was really something that was done in an effort to help, um, improve our flood rating overall as a community, which would help lower, uh, the flood insurance rates for people in Falls Township who still have to pay flood insurance. We talked at our last meeting about the fact that a lot of residents of Falls Township have gotten out, especially in the North Park area, uh, have gotten out of the flood zone because FEMA has changed their maps after us, um, you know, kind of rattling the cage for several years. Um, we know that more changes are coming, they've already told us that, for other areas of Falls Township. It does not mean that everybody in Falls will be out of a flood zone if they're in a flood zone now. But a significant amount, uh, of the, um, residents who currently pay flood insurance, even though they may have lived in an area where it's never ever flooded, um, they will be coming out, uh, at some point over the next probably 18 months or so. When we did create that other flood, uh, ordinance, it made this one and other sort of sections of our ordinances that had rel, uh, sections relevant to flooding, it made it obsolete. We don't need to have it in multiple places. And so this is really just repealing those areas that were sort of spotty in other parts of our code, um, because now we have one sort of complete ordinance that has everything all in one spot. Ms. Gallagher, did you do a good job of that, or?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
One point I will clarify, neither the ordinance that we adopted previously or this ordinance removes or adds any properties to the flood hazard areas. This just governs what happens once a property is within that flood hazard area.
Okay, thank you, thank you, important thing to clarify. All right, any questions for Ms. Gallagher?
No.
Okay, all right, is this to be ordinance, um, 15?
Oh, three.
Oh, three, which would be repealing parts of our ordinance that are now redundant. Uh, is there a motion to approve ordinance 15 dash three?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and, um, next item is authorization to advertise for a new ordinance, and we've seen these in a couple of other municipalities, uh, around us. And I know we've had some residents who have complained about this issue, and that's why we, we've asked our legal counsel to look at this. We've also asked our environmental advisory council to look at this, as well as their shade tree commission to look at this issue, and that is the issue of bamboo. Um, there are areas around the township where bamboo has been planted on purpose, just maybe sometimes accidentally, somebody throws a plant somewhere, thinking it'll just go away and die, and it doesn't. Bamboo, certain types are incredibly invasive, it spreads very, very, very fast. It's one of the things people like about it, because you can plant it almost like a hedge, and it grows up very quickly, and it's private, and it looks nice. The problem is it doesn't stop there. Um, and it can be damaging to people's properties, damaging to people's houses. I know we had one individual who came and, uh, spoke, um, at one point about, she lived in a neighboring property, her neighbor had bamboo, and the bamboo had grown under her yard. It hadn't sprouted up until it got to her house, it was actually growing underneath the siding of her house. And it wasn't even stuff she had planted, it's the stuff that some of the other people had planted. So we asked, um, our, our, uh, legal counsel to take a look at ways that we could address this issue. And, uh, Ms. Gallagher, I'll let you go ahead through and summarize what we're doing. Again, authorizing advertisement right now. I know there's one minor change we're gonna make to this, we talked about earlier at staff meeting today.
Correct.
But, um, I'll let you go ahead and talk with us, and we can approve this maybe to, at a future meeting.
Correct. Um, the one minor change, um, that you referenced is, under the, uh, what is defined as bamboo and intended to be captured by this ordinance, we're gonna remove milkweed. The intent of the ordinance, um, is fairly comprehensive, um, it's intended to capture all these invasive species of bamboo, but not completely prohibit bamboo. So even with the invasive species, if certain precautions are taken, property owners can maintain the bamboo, um, and if it's not properly maintained, it allows the township to go in and cite these individuals and, and educate them as far as what can be done. This does not remove any ability a property owner would have to, um, have any legal remedy against their neighbor if their neighbor does have bamboo that's growing on their property. Also requires notification to, uh, new homeowners, um, regarding, uh, whether or not there is bamboo on the property, as well as purchasers of existing properties, um, as far as the existence of this ordinance, so that there's an education of the new members of the township, that this ordinance is in place, and that way, we're not surprising anyone when bamboo grows on their property.
Okay. Comments or questions? Mr. Galloway?
Yeah, the, uh, bamboo, there's, there's invasive and non-invasive bamboo, right?
Correct.
So this is just, uh, pertains to the running roots, the, uh, the bamboo that grows 20, 30 foot a year, right?
Correct, invasive monopidle tropical or semi-tropical grasses.
And the other varieties, you don't see very much because they don't have that quality of growing, uh, rapidly. Uh, they're basically nice decorative plants.
That's correct.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Mr. Dent?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
None.
And I know that, um, I said, one of the things that, in giving this to the environmental advisory council, having them look at it, and the one mention that Ms. Gallagher made about, um, notifying, uh, homeowners, that was something that the EAC recommended. For new homeowners, uh, that they would, you know, they buy, if they're buying a new house, or they're buying a house from somebody else, uh, you know, but when our inspectors go through and inspect the property, or when, when, uh, certificate of occupancy is given, they will also be given information, just basically the ordinance. Letting them know that if they plant bamboo, or if bamboo's on their property, that it's their responsibility to maintain it, or preferably to make sure they're planting the kind that doesn't spread. Uh, and that's a way for us to sort of just get the word out, uh, to them about that. So this is authorization to advertise only. Is there a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes for March 17th, 2015. Comments or questions, corrections?
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pollan.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented for March 17th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, manager comment, Mr. Gray?
Yes, just a few items tonight. Township received a letter from Tom Hecker, dated March 30th, 2015, regarding waste gas located at 450 New Bold Road, uh, referencing a request for an extension on the project until June 19th, 2015. Board is asked to consider this extension at this time.
Okay, comments or questions at all?
None.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Township received a letter from Francis Ernst, uh, representing Calamar Properties LLC, located at Old Route 13, uh, in Falls, requesting an extension on this project, uh, until October 15th, 2015. Board is asked to consider this extension.
Okay, comments or questions?
Yeah, what are they doing here, do we, you know?
Really warehouse?
Is this at the, um, Atlantic?
Yeah, same site, yes.
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to grant the extension October 15th, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On 20, on February 25th, 2015, a hearing was held pursuant to Section 20612 of the Falls Township Code regarding allegations that Piscopo Brothers had violated Chapter 206 of the code. Um, based on the evidence presented at that hearing, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors find that Piscopo Brothers did violate Chapter 206 of the Township Code. It is recommended that a fine of $50 be imposed. It is further recommended that a formal warning letter be issued that advises Piscopo Brothers that any further violations of the code will result in further sanctions, including, but not limited to, the revocation of the wrecker's license. Board is asked to consider this recommendation at this time.
Okay, comments or questions?
Where'd the $50 come up, but, do we have that in our?
Our ordinance provides, um, for the first violation, it's a recommended fine of $50.
Right, cause that doesn't cover your costs.
Likely does not.
Likely does not.
How much we spend on towers' legal fees this year?
We can get you that information.
Yeah.
We'll have it, we'll get it for you in the next day or so.
Yeah, and I'd like to see us change the ordinance to at least cover legal fees, $50 is, you know, nothing.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, uh, is there a motion then to, um, what's that, endorse, authorize, or, or what's the proper term?
Accept.
Accept the recommendation of the manager in the, uh, matter regarding Piscopo towing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Jim.
Okay. All right, um.
Could we, I have a question.
Sure.
Could we change the ordinance so that if a tower does violate our ordinance, that they have to pay the legal fees?
We could look into that.
Makes more sense, doesn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
It seems like we do this quite often.
The violation in question in this particular matter was relatively, uh, minor, so the, the fine was?
The legal fees will be relatively minor.
It's all relative, yes.
Not saying that.
Well, somebody made a complaint, so we have to address it, so there's a legal fee.
That's correct. Yeah, and it's a good point. If we have to go through the process of having a hearing, Mr. Gray's time, your time, the police officers who came and testified, you know, and it was a minor thing. It was a truck that showed up, and instead of having a little, you know, magnetic decal on the side, it's Piscopo, it didn't have it on there.
Right.
So it just wasn't, you know?
The ordinance already, right. And the ordinance already provides that if there's a violation of the fee schedule, that's considered a serious violation, that they can have the license revoked immediately. So that we can take any sanction up to that.
Okay.
I would like to change the ordinance so that they have to pay the fees. That would that would motivate them to not make violations.
It makes sense.
We have not yet changed the ordinance this year, so that...
This might be a record, making it all the way to April without having to change orders.
We probably spent more this year than we've had any other year.
Yeah.
Yeah, no doubt.
So, all right, thank you very much. Yeah, definitely good recommendation. All right, well, any other, since you started, Mr. Dent, any other board comment for you?
Just the Live Here, Spend Here campaign kicked off. We have a website. We, I think we're featuring a business, Thorn Ridge Hardware, this month. I don't know if that's on there yet.
No, later this month it'll be available.
Okay. But we're having a logo contest, to design a logo. We did get one entry so far. So I think the prize is a membership, a family membership to the Plinewood Pool.
That's correct.
So if you have any artistic creative ability, enter your logo. It could be featured on our website and businesses throughout the town. And there's a lot of good information on the website as well, so you can link to it from our township website. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Mr. Rocco?
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Brasky?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Galloway?
Just that the folks that were here earlier tonight, wanting away with the abandoned houses on the property, I can sympathize. I've been looking at the house directly across the street from me, abandoned for about the last, maybe 12 years.
Three arches?
No, that's a little down the street.
Sorry, I couldn't understand.
And this house, I remember our neighbors just cutting along. It was involved in some form of litigation. Neighborhood kids would break into it. All sorts of problems occur with it. But thankfully, you know, over time, these homes still have value. And someone is involved in fixing it up now, they might be flipping it, I don't know. But it's comforting to see people in that house again. So I can really sympathize, and it's a very frustrating experience.
Sure.
All right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And it is frustrating for us, and as I said to the residents who are here, you know, people, you know, and it's one of the most sacred rights in our country is the right to own property. And it doesn't mean you have to keep the property nice. I mean, obviously, taste is a relative thing. And so, you know, we have certain restrictions, and I've used this sort of example before. You know, unless you're in historic district, you know, if you want to paint your house orange and have purple shutters and a green roof, it's your house. We can't control that. You know, obviously, your neighbors aren't gonna like you very much, but, and you're gonna be drawing down property values, but there still isn't much that we can do about that. If there's a safety issue, like the reference with the trees and branches that might be falling, that's obviously a very serious issue. Or a tree that's leaning over and potentially falling, that's a very serious issue. And so we start to get a little more power in that sense, in terms of our ability to do things. But there really is a serious limit on what we can do. I did want to acknowledge that we do have a individual who, due to his changing work schedule and personal life, had to step down from the Parking Rec Board. And so I know we have an opening on there. And we do have some openings on other boards and commissions, and so we're always looking for volunteers, again. And I know we have one gentleman, Steve Hammer, who had put in for the planning commission. And I think there's one vacancy on that commission. Yes, there's one vacancy. It's a four-year term. And so I'll be happy to bring up Mr. Hammer's name as, to be appointed to the planning commission.
I have a second.
Okay, you mean second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, I want to thank everybody for the work they've done, and again, thank Chief Wilcox and Judge Wazlosky for being here and swearing in our new officer. The other two officers, just because of when they were hired and when they had to go to the police academy, it just didn't coordinate with, you know, with our meeting schedule. And this is, again, something new. So Officer Almeida is the first one to go through this. And I know we have some other officers in Falls who have retired or are going to be retiring in the next couple of years. And so we'll be hiring more officers here. And it's interesting to see this changeover. I know Chief Wilcox mentioned earlier before our meeting that he's been on the board for, or he's been a police officer for 43 years here in Falls Township. I didn't have the heart to tell him that, you know, where he's been an officer for 43 years, I guess 43 years he's been a police officer. I didn't want to have the heart to tell him that that's how old I am. But, you know, we have a lot of fun with him, and he has a lot of fun with Mr. Gray, and I know Mr. Gray's wondering if there's still any food left over in the reception they're having, so we'll find that out. We'll find that out right now. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.